I'd like to call the regular council meeting of Tuesday, May fifth, two thousand and fifteen to order. I ask everyone to please rise. We have the end of page two, like our announcement, Kara and I'll leave it.
Let me walk for a year, Mother's Day, birth for the upcoming holiday of the weekend. There is no love like a mother's love, no stronger bond on earth like the precious bond that comes from God to a mother when she gives birth. A mother's love is forever strong, never changing for all time, and when her children need her most, a mother's love will shine. God bless all our mothers, God bless them everyone, for all the tears and heartache and for the special work they've done. And when her days on earth are over, a mother's love lives on through many generations with God's blessing from above.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Kara.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Lasky.
Here.
Mace. Startle. Kurski.
Here. We'll have the reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April twenty first, two thousand and fifteen.
Take the motion, approve them.
Second that motion.
Motion by Tom and a second by Dan. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. I would just like to announce that there was, the Borough Council has held an executive session on May first, two thousand and fifteen to discuss a real estate matter. I want to make sure we note that in the minutes. Communications.
I have one. This letter is from Paul Federer.
Corrige.
Tamaco Chris Authority, addressed to Tamaco Borough Council at the April twenty, two thousand and fifteen meeting of the Tamaco Chris Authority. Attorney Jeff Bo requested the following pay schedule, a two thousand five hundred dollar annual repayment fee and one hundred and fifty dollars per hour for services as the attorney for the Chris program. A motion was made by Jack Holt and Phil Hum approving this request contingent upon approval from Tamaco Borough Council and payable from an approved borough account. Please notify the Chris Authority concerning this matter.
We're subtle.
That's pretty high, isn't it?
He's more experienced. He's a better.
I'll make a motion to keep this Chris moving along. I wouldn't want to throw any kind of wrench into it. Let's see, a little high.
Motion by Tom and a second by Kara. Under the question, any questions or comments? Their, their financing authority, the work that they're going to do is going to be some heavy lifting.
Is it?
When they get into, when they get into reviewing applications for financing. Hopefully, if it works out well and people submit their forms and their businesses do well, there'll be a lot of money passing through our Chris authority back into businesses. It, it is something that you do want somebody who's, you know, spend the time, you want to be there and so again, Jeff's a good guy to do that. Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
This is all for communication.
Thank you. Borough managers report.
Thank you. I just thought I'd like to report that demolition of two sixteen Pitt Street has been completed. That was completed just recently. The other demolition projects we expect will start very soon. We've been in contact with them and they're gearing up to, to start a street, a spruce street. Also, we had an individual express interest in purchasing two thirty one Columbia Street, which is a demolition project from years ago. I advertised that building, it was set for May fourteenth at two P M. And the warm weather we've been having, we've been thinking about, of course, the pool, getting a lot of pool applications lately. We'll be getting ready to start cleaning up the pool and also pound that town next week. We also advertised for, uh, purchase seasonal employees and the vacancy down at the sewer treatment plant. And we've been getting quite a few applications and Christine's prepared a list, which I'll get to the finance, wage and salary committee shortly. And lastly, everyone should have a copy of this material here. It's information on utility bills. Our utility staff, Sean Shannon, are working on converting our insisted utility bills, which in our postcard format, to a letter, uh, a letter sized format. So what we have here, and this is, this is, I just want to point this out so everyone can take a look at it and come back with some questions. We're certainly not looking for any, uh, answers tonight, of course. What we have here is a proposal from our software company to do these necessary software changes for the new bills. We also have quotes from two local printing companies who print blanks for us. It would actually be illegal size when we print it. We tear off one and the letter size will be available with these stuff in that book, of course.
So is this in here? Are these proposals in the back there?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a software proposal, software change proposal, there's a printing of the.
And you compare actual, this is what we would send out to people?
Yeah, and these are samples of what they come up with for, for the total bill. There's a portion we keep, a portion designated solely to credit cards. As we've seen, quite a short increase in credit card payments. And then there's a portion.
You can't get this on eleven by seven table? You can't get this on eleven by seven table?
We, we discussed that a lot about shrinking it to, well.
Eight and a half by eleven.
I guess in letter size. Yeah, we talked, we talked about that for quite a while. We thought about trying to squash it onto eight and a half by eleven. It's pretty too small for some folks.
I mean, it's been.
It would be eight and a half by eleven when it goes out.
What'd you say?
It will be, it'll be legal size when it's printed. And we maintain a, a small portion of the bar as a stub within, like, for the record.
This is gonna be only piece of paper I get in my house to sell.
It would be eight and a half by eleven when it's mailed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Will, will the staff detach the bottom and keep that bottom stub?
Right.
As a record of what we said.
So what would postage go up?
I don't have postage.
Since you're mailing not a postcard, you're mailing out forty-two cent parts, but isn't it forty cents? Forty-seven cents?
They don't put, they don't put the amount of stamps anymore, it just says forever, so I don't, I don't know.
But you're talking an increase in postage now for the same amount of price, correct?
Right, we'd be purchasing envelopes and, well, if they wouldn't be stamps, we, we get a whole mailing. It would be taken to the post office and processed there and we would get a discounted mailing, but.
And are you getting?
I don't have that one.
Are you getting the envelopes from either one of these as well, or are you just buying them?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we, they would come to the. So how long to address that, right?
And two bills we go.
That information I don't.
Two bills we go in an envelope. That normally are mailed together.
Water and sewer. Well, the, the way our billing is set up, there is three separate bills that mail out at different mailboxes. Certain areas may receive two around the same time. But that's unusual. I mean, that, that's not the norm.
You have a handful of water.
I thought, yeah, I thought, I thought it was all pretty consistent that water and sewer came together for, for refuge with the eye cycle, but.
Uh, not for everybody.
Not for.
They get one a month since August.
Most people get one a month.
Twenty thousand.
And it was designed that way. I mean, we, we would prefer to.
Eight and a half by eleven.
Our preference would be to, according to combine all three bills and send out one, one bill every quarter. But, uh, the counterargument is it may be too much for someone to spend their whole time. Cause you're looking at paying the water store garbage bill all at once, quarter. Yeah, I know, it sounds, uh. There was a lot of discussion about this over the years. We were also talking about setting the penalty rates for deliberate payments. Making it uniform across all utilities as they all get it.
You can send a bill off, like, because of different dates of the bill to go. Doesn't that, oh, we have to send your, more than a month for pay. I don't know, maybe if you want. It's nice to change things.
Is it brush printing? Both of here, is that from brush printing, not from?
Yeah, that was more of that.
You said it was gonna, oh.
Yeah, that was a thorough raise. So we should, it's kind of tied together.
And why the change, Kevin?
Oh, eventually we won't be able to use postcards. Post, so post offices have stopped accepting them. They, they won't mail. Also, it, it's, they, there's a tendency for them to get misplaced. They can slip into magazines and they. Get lost. Also, the, uh, our software company is also pushing us to do, uh, a laser bill, laser printed bill. The ones we sent out now are dog matrix, that's, it's, it's gonna be harder and harder not to possibly get a dog matrix print. What we have has been chucked away for, I don't know, a dozen years. So there's a variety of reasons. Plus, we can get, as you can see, you get a lot more information on these bills. Including a section for credit cards, which we don't have now. And since we've started accepting the credit cards. It started off slowly, but it's really, you know, steam.
Give a recommendation.
Uh, right now, I just, we, we would just like to take a look at this and just, uh, yeah, give us a feedback. We're certainly, we're not looking, I mean, this is the first time we've, obviously.
So we're not, we're not gonna take action on this tonight. We can either take the proposals, take a look at them and begin meetings too.
Plus, we, uh, we're not gonna take it to the safari meeting and discuss it. But, uh, you know, they, the two of these utilities are, are theirs. Do you have, do you have a printer to support this? I mean, I, I fully endorse it, give him a, a whole printer, give him a big printer. Do we have a printer to support this? We have a recommendation. That's something else, this is still a must. Okay, good run. We have to get a price on the printer, then. R I T, guys. It would be a high speed.
Yeah, high speed printer, right.
Laser, laser printer. Very good.
Yeah.
The printer would be pricier than most because we're working a high speed. Or commercial type of laser.
So Kevin, let, well, that's possible, the mayor, the water authority bill would be for a hometown at the moment.
Yeah, yeah, we go hometown.
At the sewer and the.
Sewer just tomorrow.
Yeah, the authorities.
They have their own sewer authority, they have a lot, they have their own bill and update. Yeah. We just, we just accept their old ways of treating it. And then we bill a large township. Well, we can give an estimate and then close quarterly and then we let the file after the audit. So the actual expenses are, whether it be over a month or a day.
You, you were talking about rehab, demolition and stuff, but let me just ask one question. The property that has prospered the tax collector, unstable account. There was fire there. Of what, yes, and the one that's been with all of, and the siding, it looks horrible. Is that, are, whose responsibility is it to have that?
We're really talking on her, but I don't think you're gonna get anything out of that motion.
Cause it's, I mean, it's interior paint, cause it was the inside, was it the inside, was that the inside of it?
No.
No.
It's a common wall.
It was a common wall.
The fire wasn't the adjacent structures, it just suffered damage as it's all.
So I'm trying to think of the painting on it, is it interior paint?
I don't think it's interior, it should be helping.
No paint on it.
High in the paint, it makes me more. You know, I mean, when they tore the building down, I think the demolition is responsible for putting something, covering an exposed building up and mistaking.
Yeah, just a temporary waterproofing.
Yeah, I mean, that, but other parts mostly gone.
Oh, or nothing.
I mean, the tax collector did such a nice job, so nice to.
Yeah, it is.
Then it's starting to strain your car out.
Yeah. Well, we looked at it as a demolition project, but we, uh, we found a structural engineer to look at it. Should you take down that structure, you're looking at a very small, at the end. So we, again, we got some structural engineers to, to, to look at. And they're actually, they're recommending it as a rehab. Would be a more cost effective approach than demolition. Cause if we demolish it, we're gonna have to somehow shore up the buttress of one house that's, that's left. So, uh. But, uh, we'll be alone in order to rehab it. We have to convince the owner to address it, which I think is very unlikely.
Cause there's a lot of.
The owner, the background, the owner. More reasonable approach. I think to say this, more reasonable approach is probably for us to hold and rehab it instead. But, uh, this requires help for that.
Did anybody talk to you?
We, uh, we're. We do find that it's low, it's, it's, it's.
No, people haven't had that for many years.
This is, uh. Well, when, when you're, you know, you put sewer cracks to the conservatorship, it was, was on par.
Can you run to a six hour with this? I mean, the alternatives, we wait for it to go through Sheriff's, City, Sheriff's, District, but that could be six, that could be six years. That's good, like, that from a two years away.
We're, we're, we have approached a neighbor, he has no interest in the corner, he wants to do it for another. We just look at it from both technicals, demolition, rehab. Since the rehab's, nobody's, no cost of threat. But you're not gonna get that over to a, well, and, and I hope.
Kevin, what is your time plan on this, the proposal for the?
We're taking it slowly, uh, we're, we're, we're rushing to something. We wanna live with it for many years to come, so. Sort of one step at a time, but we're doing it. You know, as, as they get free time between billings and collection. Like, like to have it, uh, running by the end of the year, hopefully.
Can I bring up one more thing, anything I've been talking about, Bill, that's, um, or your opinion on a rental unit? The attic, if someone's asleep up there, has to have a fire escape?
Not in a single dwelling, not a single family home. If it's converted into apartments through zoning or through code, then yes, there has to be a second means of egress.
Not just a window that has some, like, four inches?
Well, there is an issue with the window, the size of the window is part of that requirement. If it is converted into apartments, if it's a single family home, there are no requirements. You can have no windows, you could have a window like this, or.
Even if it's a rental?
Even if it's a rental, as long as it's considered a single family, right, Mike?
That's great, that's what I understood.
Yep, okay.
But if, if it's attached to another house? Well, it's.
Still a single.
That's a neighbor, yeah, it's still single family. Yeah.
If, if the building itself only has one occupant?
Yeah, it's not broken up into three of the rental properties.
Even if it's attached.
Half a double, I guess it is, or, or three homes or one or more.
Yeah, three, three home, you know where a.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So does that, the guy in the middle, does he have any?
Some lumberjack street.
No. Yeah.
Well, we sent.
This is more of a.
Oh, is this that? Okay.
This is more of a civil issue, a neighborly issue, I think.
All right, thank you.
We found no evidence of anyone sleeping up there.
Even if they were, they, they could.
It's, it's not an issue.
Thank you.
Anything else, Kevin?
No, no, thank you, that, that's all.
All right. Police chief, I have nothing, Mr. President. Committee reports, parking and traffic.
Mr. President, I have one motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve a handicap parking space for the application for Helen Harris of four thirty-three East Elm Street.
Motion by Kara, second by Tom. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
And that's it.
The application, uh, we reject it. Will that person get a letter, or how do we, what do we do with that?
We'll reject it.
In Washington Street.
We're not granting.
Do we need to vote on it, to deny it, or do paperwork's not complete? Do you just send him a letter?
Yeah, I can send him a letter stating why it's, why we can't act on it, sure.
Anything else under parking and traffic?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Any other committee reports? Dave Mace isn't able to be here today to handle a family emergency that came up. He did, he did ask if council could act on the application for Justin Hugel. He applied for a park and maintenance position at the bungalow. If we're ready to act on that, we do have another meeting in two weeks. I asked him, when he told me he couldn't be at the meeting, I asked him if he had any, any motions he could recommend that we do that.
Well, I make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Kara, hire Justin Hugel, the bungalow. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. Any other committee reports? Mayor's report.
I got two things, uh, minor issues. Uh, one was email that we received today. I shared it with Kevin. It was concerning an issue of code violations in Swoogle Avenue. And I asked Kevin to work with code enforcement and report back to us on, uh, the validity of the issues and what has been done in that, uh, that neighborhood. And the other one, we have a program with the telephone database that we, we report to the community on if there's an issue with water. We sparingly use it, um, so I, I would, and, uh, times are changing and most people don't have home landlines anymore. But I did get a, uh, information this past week about a text alert. It's free. Mike, you would have to build a database of folks' cell phones to do the text alert. My only concern would be the privacy of it if we got into a, a free program with, uh, providing our database of cell phones and, uh, and how that would, uh, impact the users that we, we share their information with. Have we been building a cellphone database at all with our, uh, our, uh, community?
Is it, is, oh, yeah, yeah, if, when people's phone numbers change, we have the ability to go on and change them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know if that.
I think, though, actually, if they can, if we direct them to the website, they can go on and change it themselves.
Okay.
Also.
There is an opportunity.
Our system will call cell phones. Uh, if it calls mine, uh, my landline.
Will it, will it send text?
I'm trying to think, text. I'm not certain.
But we do have an opportunity to join a, a program that does text alerts. It is free charge providing, we provide the, the cellphone database. I, again, I would be concerned with, uh, providing that information and what other arts of information they would do.
This is a separate company, this is a company that offers us.
Is this the one that Manhattan City is using?
I'm not certain. Company based out of Bay City, gentleman's residence, Arlington. I didn't dive into it too deep without sharing the information with you.
Yours will call a phone number and if you don't hit it, they will leave a message.
And that is a very safe, secure program that we have within here, which I like that. I do, you know, believe with the society's movement, with social media and that, and whatnot, and this is, you know, something that could be beneficial. But without having our control and knowing where that information is going, that would be my concern.
And we shouldn't hesitate to use the system we have, you know, if, if we have it, we wouldn't get worked up quickly and to, to.
Absolutely. I always go here and watch, you know.
Yeah. Do you prefer his or mine?
I hear more, more Rob's.
Yeah.
I mean, you can go with you when you're on the phone. Let Rob do it.
He likes to do it, I think.
That is all I have. Kerry has a professional radio.
I think Kerry would get a great voice.
I'm all about.
We can set it up so you can do it at home.
Anything else, that's all I have. Anybody from the floor wish to address council?
I have a question with that. What about us?
Please stand up and state your name and address.
Edith Trivore, three sixteen North Columbia Street. What about us people that don't use cell phones, we don't have cell phones?
You, you have, you have any phone?
A house phone, yeah.
The, the system that we have now uses any, any phone number that you input.
Right, but if you switch over to just cell phones, you're texting.
Oh, we would only do that in addition, it would be in addition, I think what the mayor was talking about was, was in addition to.
We're old school.
You do get the alerts right now.
I do, I do.
Yes, absolutely. And we own that program.
Cause I thought, well, to switch the phone, uh, cell phones and texting, us old people, we don't, we're not into that.
I'm ready to get rid of the phone myself. Throw, throw a cell phone, go back to the landline.
I think what he was proposing, that we do that in addition to.
Oh, okay, I was just worried, cause I thought, now I won't know nothing.
I'm very concerned about it as well, because it's, 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 it's not under our control so much if this would be. We would, we would be working with an outside company, we would provide them with the data, with the numbers, uh, the contact information, and then just give them the alerts. I, I would be, would be more, I would feel more comfortable with our program if we had control and you would hear Robert, Kevin's voice, or possibly Kerry in the future.
I, well, I've been hearing Kevin, so, thank you.
Ours is, uh, it's internet based, so we. I think it supports texting, uh, so I gotta use that function.
Anything else, that's all I have. Anybody else on the floor wish to address council, if not anyone other? What is it, is report? Justin, you were here for the committee reports. Any committee reports now? Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business?
I, I do have something. Um, I don't have a letter yet, but I will have a letter for, uh, Georgia and, uh, you as well. Um, I'm gonna be taking a leave of absence from Tamaco Borough Council starting June twenty eighth. Um, I don't know if all of you know, but I recently joined the P A Army National Guard. And, uh, I leave for basic training, uh, July fourteenth. Uh, I'm also taking leave from work starting June twentieth as well. I thought it was appropriate to do both at the same time so I can get things to have been finished for me. Um, I'm hopefully hoping that I'm going to be back, um, for my last meeting, but it depends on, you know, A I T and stuff like that. So, um, I do wanna thank you all, um, for working with me and, uh, I, this is one of the best experiences of my life so far. And now this, you know, hopefully will be even better, so, uh, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you for, for being on council and thank you for, uh, for what you're doing, I think it's great. Uh, your position, you'll still, still be a councilman until the end of the year. And you, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in any, in, in any level, uh, that you can, uh, do the end of the year.
I won't get my phone back until after basic training. That's probably, that's probably, yeah, it's probably one of the toughest, one of the toughest things that I'm gonna have to deal with. But, uh, once I get back in A I T, I get, there's a little more leniency with cell phones, so, um, as, as much. But, uh, once I get back in A I T, I get a little more leniency with cell phones, so, um, as, as much as I can be involved, I'll be involved.
So, thank you.
And you wish, you wish in luck and all the best with it, too.
Fine.
Thank you.
Any other new business? We need an executive session. We need an executive session to talk about a real estate matter.
Go ahead, show ahead. Real estate matter.
A motion by Justin, a second by Dan, Justin, they all know. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're gonna go into a brief executive session to talk about a real estate matter.